The council, regular council meeting, it's Tuesday, October 22nd, 3:00 PM. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Vince Maggio. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for all your blessings. Lord, we pray that, we pray for continued peace and restoration for those affected by the storms that went through Florida and North Carolina. Lord, we pray that you will continue to be with them. Lord, we pray for each other. We pray that we will, that we are able to work together and have a sense of unity. We pray for peace and healing. We pray for all our first responders and military in your holy name. We pray, amen.
Please follow me saying the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And as do the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond's absent. Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams, absent. Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the president pro tem, barred from further audience before the council, unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked of councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right. Agenda, we need a motion to approve today's agenda.
Counsel, we have some changes to today's agenda. Request by the MPC to delete new business items number one and number two. They'll bring those back at a later meeting.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion, we delete items number one and two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Montgomery, second by Mr. Free. Is there any comments from the audience? Comments from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. All right, under new business, add, and add an ordinance under new business, introduce an ordinance to contract with Neil Schaefer to provide a traffic study for the intersection of Arthur A.T. Parkway and Shady Grove Drive. First reading. This item is being requested to be added due to the necessity of the project.
Make the motion, we add.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Free. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
And I will need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Yes, sir.
Think we address that when we get to it. Isn't that right, Phyllis?
Yes.
I make the motion, we accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Free. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
And do we have any ceremonial matters or recognition of guests?
Not that I'm aware of. Is there any youth leadership students? I think there's a youth leadership student out there.
Is there a youth leadership student? Why don't you come up and state your name and what school you go to? Introduce yourself. Come on.
Please say, is that a second one over your left, over your right shoulder?
Hi, I'm Bella Himmun. I'm a junior at Houghton High School.
Welcome to the Bossier City Council.
I'm Boyd Wilson from Benton High School.
Welcome, thank you for being here.
All right, I will need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 8, 2024 regular council meeting and the October 8, 2024 budget workshop and the October 10, 2024 special meeting in dispense with the readings.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment?
My name's Alice Boyer, 5041 Highway 80, Houghton, Louisiana. And there's an inaccuracy in the, in the minutes from last, from the October 8th meeting. There's, you know, there are a lot of specific details on the other two items that were requested to be added, but the councilman's letter to the president is shown as other issues, which seems to be intentional as far as a change in reflecting the true situation that occurred. And me walking out was only because I was escorted out. If I would have insisted on my three minutes to, if I would have maintained my position on my three minutes in wanting them, I'm sure I would have been forcibly removed. So yes, I did walk out, but, and I still don't know what meeting rule I broke. So I advise that y'all don't approve this, the minutes of this, of October 8th, because they're inaccurate. Other issues is a gloss over of what actually occurred. It was a specific item, just like it was a specific item for the charter commission to bring forth their petition, their petition, and y'all mentioned in here, the people's petition. But for some reason, my subject matter, one issue, was reflected as other issues. I mean, that is a, it, it can only be shown, it only appears as intentional. And so I would say that the minutes do not need to be approved until it's corrected. Thank you.
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I wasn't going to comment on that, but I do believe as a minimum, somebody from this body owes Ms. Boyer an apology for what happened. If the, if she was actually removed, I believe it requires a vote by this body to allow her to come to another meeting. I, I'm not sure if I'm accurate on that or not, but I think that she was removed for purposes that were not clearly defined. And I think the other thing is, this is a freedom of speech issue. If you want to stop people from coming to your meeting, do things like comment under your breath when your microphone captures comments when people come up and speak. That happened to me in one of the last two meetings, I think by, Mr. President, by Mr. Maggio. And I think that kind of stuff needs to stop in these meetings because you're stopping people or deterring people from coming to speak. People, people from the community should be, should feel welcome to come speak to this body. Many times, the people who come to speak study the issues more than this body does. And I think when they're presenting issues, that that should be welcome, not deterred. And then I wanted to correct one thing in the record of the minutes, which I don't know, Phyllis, if you can find it, but Resolution 1 of 2024, if you can find it, says that Robert's Rule of Orders are adopted by reference and will apply to the meeting. So I think that does need to be corrected so that people know what rules they're following when they come to the meeting, and that is actually addressed in the minutes. I don't know how you would correct it, except maybe in these minutes. But I do want to read one thing that's never read, which is by, the decorum by, by the council members. While the council is in session, the members must preserve order and decorum, and a member shall neither by conversation or otherwise delay or disrupt the proceedings or the place, or the peace of the council and not disturb any member while speaking or refuse to obey the orders. That ought to be amended so that it applies to comments towards the public. So I just recommend that, that, you know, sometimes the people who come up and speak may make errors, or they may want to make their point real firmly made. And they should have a right to speak, so please address those issues in the future. I appreciate the chance to speak.
So any other public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, bids.
Witness opening of sealed bids for P24-07 lateral B1 ditch paving construction. It's a rebid.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler, we are opening the bids today for bid number P2407. It is the lateral B1 ditch paving construction rebid. And we didn't have any bids at the last opening, so we do have two this time. There was one addendum on the project, and the engineer's estimate is $1,853,956.
What was that again? 1-8-5-3. 9-5-6?
Yes. The first bid is from Testament LLC. They do have their bid bond and they did acknowledge the addenda. Their bid is for $1,964,316. 1-9-6-4-3-1-6. Okay, the next bid is from Three Gen Construction LLC. They do have their bid bond and they did acknowledge the addendum. Their bid is for $2,654,568.75. That's 2-6-5-4-5-6-8-point, I'm sorry, 7-5. I ask that you take these bids under advisement.
Shall move.
Second. So we have a motion by Mr. Montgomery, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public hearing and actions on unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Bossier City and the Louisiana Department of Children and Family Services to designate the Bossier City Civic Center as a medical need shelter site in the event of a declared emergency. Final reading.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Darby and a second by Mr. Montgomery. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance appropriating $1,600,000 from the 2018 LCDA Bond Fund for all project closeout costs and approving report of change orders 9, 10, 11, and 13 in the amount of $1,322,933.53 for the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Phase 2 project. Final reading.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment?
Again, David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I'm going to quote from a Jeff Sadow article that he wrote, "Bossier City Debt Behind Call For Tax Fee Increases." And I just, because I think it relates to this project, he quotes that the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way in its final state has cost over $84 million. And I haven't seen anything that, that states that. And I believe the project was estimated at one time around below 60 million and then eventually by the man check slides, we're usually at 60 million. Can anybody tell me, anybody on the council that can tell me how much the total cost for the Walter O. Bigby Phase 2 has cost Bossier City? You know, including land acquisition? Can anybody answer that? I know you don't have to by the rules of decorum or anything, but I think the people in Bossier City need to know how much that project costs. It'll come up a little bit later on, but I believe that that was an extraordinary cost per mile for that project. Thank you for letting me comment.
All right, is there any other public comment? Any comment from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to provide $200,000 in supplemental funding for the city's Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant to enhance and replace street lighting with modern and energy-efficient LED lighting using the 2024 Riverboat Gaming Capital Projects Fund. Final reading.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Darby. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve report of change order one for the Walbrook Park, Walbrook Park Maintenance Building Project with an increase of $11,010.23 for a total contract price of $498,101.23. Final reading.
Shall move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance enacting Section 110-115 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances prohibiting the parking of vehicles in front and side yards. Final reading.
So moved. And I guess that's going to die for lack of a second.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Adopt an ordinance to approve report of change order number one for the municipal complex security improvements project with an increase of $8,456 for a total contract price of $826,456. Final reading.
Shall move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance proposing amendments to the city charter of the city of Bossier City as recommended by the Charter Review Commission.
Phyllis, I'd like to make an amendment to that. Do I introduce it and then amend it?
You can, you can make your amendment and then you'll have to reintroduce it as amended.
I know, but do we need to say, no? All right, I'd like to offer an amendment to number seven, changing the date from December to March 29th of 2025.
Second.
All right, there is a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Darby to amend this ordinance to reflect March 29, 2024 instead of December 7th. Is there, or 25, I'm sorry, thank you. Is there any public comment on this amendment?
And that is the election date, correct?
That's correct.
Is there any comment from the council on this amendment?
Montgomery and Mr. Darby?
Yes, ma'am. All right, council, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Now you would have to make a motion to reintroduce as amended.
I'll reintroduce number seven to the agenda as amended.
Adopting ordinance.
Adopting the ordinance as amended. And this will require another reading in two weeks.
Right, I'm going to read the title and then y'all can make the motion in a second because I'll read the full title. Adopt an ordinance proposing amendments to the city charter of the city, city of Bossier City as recommended by the Charter Commish, Charter Review Commission as amended. And that's Mr. Montgomery, and who made the second?
Second.
Mr. Darby. All right, so is there any public comment on this? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. A public hearing for the fiscal year 2025-2029 CDBG Consolidated Plan and 2025 CDBG Annual Action Plan.
All right, we will open the public hearing. Is there any comments on the 2025 to 2029 CDBG grants? Hi, Mr. Robb, how are you, sir?
Pretty good. I try not to take up too much time. You've heard this before, some of the people here may not have, but for the Community Development Block Grant, that's a HUD program, and we're, we're an entitlement city, so we get the funding every year, but we don't have any control over the amount we get. Congress appropriates a certain amount of money for the whole program, for the nation. It's divided up by the law, how it's written out, how it's going to be divided up, and then we get our part of it every year. But as long as Congress continues to fund the program, we'll continue to get some money. Every year, we do apply for the amount and prepare an application for the amount that we got the year before because it's taken Congress longer and longer to appropriate funds. You know, nearly a year ahead of time now before the money actually becomes available. So that's kind of where we stand. We start with the same amount. At the end of, after Congress has appropriated it and it's been divided up, they'll notify us as to how much we get. And in that case, we'll adjust our grant up or down by whatever percentage it was in the items in the grant. And we have all these items that we'll be doing each year in the, in the annual action plan. If we change that, we will have, you know, public meetings, get input, come back by y'all before we change the plan. All of our projects, there are certain limitations built into the program. One of them, we can only spend 15% of the grant for public services and only 20% or less for administrative costs. The rest of it has to go towards program items. And there's only, you know, there's a list of specific things that are allowable. Some things are not allowable under it. So sometimes we have to look and see what's on the list and what isn't on the list. The, I put aside here on your desk there, an item, it's the 2025 Annual Action Plan. The items are basically what funding I got. It's not totally finalized yet. It's preliminary. I don't think you want me to go through the list today.
No, that's fine. Counsel, do you have any questions?
One thing, Mr. Brown, thank you for your work on item number 12. What agency provide that transportation?
That's Bossier Community Services.
Okay, okay, yeah. They've, they've done it a long time. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown? No, thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there any other public comment? All right, we will close the public hearing. New business?
Adopt an ordinance approving a conditional use approval for the retail sale of high and low content alcohol for off-premise consumption at a proposed convenience store, Peters Grocery and Liquor located at fifteen-twenty-one Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance to adopt the general fund budget for 2025.
I'd like to make the motion we combine items four through twenty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Darby to combine all budget items four through twenty-eight. Is there any public comment on that?
David Crockett, six-five-three Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I knew this was going to happen and I'm not going to complain about it like I have in the past, but it only gives me two opportunities to speak. I referred to Bossier City debt behind call for tax fee increases written by Jeff Sadow. If you're a citizen in Bossier City, you should really read Jeff Sadow's articles. Jeff Sadow is a political science professor at LSUS. He leads the Department of Distance Learning in Political Science. He writes prolifically about Bossier City and its debt issues. And I just wanted to point out some things. And Ms. Nottingham did an incredible job the other day during the workshop on the debt and budget issues. Some of the things that she talked about were the fact that the city is going to have to raise taxes in order to approve or to make it through 2024 with the debt the way it is. So most people in Bossier City thought that at the last council, two council meetings ago, that Bossier City was not going to roll forward the taxes. So not only that, but the fact that Bossier City is going to likely have to increase the fees for trash as well as possibly a water rate increase in the future. So most of Bossier City doesn't get an opportunity to go to those workshops because of the time that they occur and/or just the fact that they didn't know what was going to happen in the meeting. Basically, what Jeff Sadow's article does is it summarizes the fact that Bossier City has about a three-million-dollar shortfall in next year's budget without increasing the millage and without moving money from the Parkway Capital Budgets Fund. I do have a question that may be addressed now or maybe in my later comment, but I just wonder if Bossier City considered using the money from the thirty-million-dollar fund that you have for the casino revenues, which is only restricted because Bossier City, City Council has voted to restrict that money and for infrastructure projects. That money was made through revenues and my understanding from a conversation I had about two years ago with the Finance Department is that money could be redirected. One of the things that's driving this shortfall is the absolute necessity for pay raises in Bossier City, which I applaud very strongly that Bossier City is finally about to make those kind of decisions. Basically, those pay raises, it looked like, or actually, this tax millage increase was going to raise one-point-one-million dollars. You have, for the next thirteen years, Bossier City pays thirty-two-million dollars, which is, I'll finish later, I'll get another chance to talk about that. But basically, this is a principal and interest payment problem that's causing problems for Bossier City, and you could use the Casino Trust Fund to be able to cover those shortfalls. And I guess I'd ask, did the city consider that fund as opposed to raising taxes?
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Is there any other public comment? Is there any comment from the council?
Ms. Nottingham? I just wanted to provide some clarity. I was not at the meeting. You, I don't believe that you equated debt payments to raising taxes. Is that correct?
No, sir.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
All right, is there any other, any other comment from the council? All right, we are voting to just combine at this time, so counsel.
Mr. President, just clarification. This is introduction, so there will be a second reading on the budget.
Yes, sir, there'll be a second reading after.
So if someone would like to come to that second reading, they will have that opportunity.
Yes, sir.
And these budgets will be available for, as they have been for how long? Public viewing?
September. It's on the website and I believe September fifteenth.
Yeah. And they'll, anyway, they'll be available again for another two weeks, so.
They'll be included in the minutes for eternity.
All right, counsel, cast your vote. Again, this is to combine four through twenty-eight.
Motion carries to combine.
Now, I need a, a motion to introduce the budget.
I make the motion we introduce all the budgets.
All right.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Free. Is there any public comment?
David Crockett, six-five-three Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I'm going to continue my comments. Basically, the Jeff Sadow article talks about how the Bossier City has a debt of one-hundred-and-ninety-one million dollars in government debt and two-hundred-and-one-million dollars in enterprise debt, which causes the thirty-two-plus, and what I've heard are rumors that possibly Bossier City's principal and interest debt that's being paid this year is above thirty-two million. I'd like to have that confirmed if we can between this meeting and the next council meeting. My comment was not that you're raising taxes. That was so ridiculous to, to address that the way that was just addressed. The fact is that Bossier City's debt, just as in Jeff Sadow's article, is creating a principal and interest payment on your debt, which takes out of your operating income for the city. Therefore, when you want to give your police, your firemen, and your staff in Bossier City pay raises, you're competing with your principal and interest on your debt. I didn't say that debt competes with, with tax increases, but absolutely, if you have to pay your principal and interest and you're running short of operating income to be able to pay for tax, for pay raises, your debt and the result of that, which you've carried for all these years, is competing with Bossier City's payments for other operating income issues. So I'll be glad to debate, Mr. President, Mr. Montgomery, or anybody else, how this creates problems with Bossier City. But wasteful spending, on some cases, does come to roost. When you time and sequence something like the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way or anything else that you're spending your money on, rather than fixing roads and neighborhoods and things that will actually make Bossier City citizens not feel too bad about the amount of debt that Bossier City has, but you spend money on big projects like that, which is another item later on, that you're going to spend two-point-eight-million dollars on a little short stretch to end a bad project, that's driving up debt in Bossier City and that does compete with your pay raises. So anyway, I'll be glad to take, you know, any other criticism of my remarks, but Jeff Sadow's article is well thought out, but it is the principal and interest on the debt that's causing problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Any comment from the council?
Absolutely. I would suggest before you propose a debate that, and I'm not speaking to one individual, I'm talking about anybody, that you learn the fundamentals of governmental accounting, which you can go back to college for. I'm sure they're available at LSUS. But before, the allegations that are levied here are, like my grandfather used to say, you can't argue with ignorance, and it would be, serve no purpose to get into some type of debate of what I've just witnessed and listened to. So that would be my suggestion. Understand the fundamentals of governmental accounting.
Is there any other comment?
I would, I would like to say for just a moment that, you know, I'm proud of this budget because I know as a council, we worked hard to come up with needed pay raises. It's something that I've, I have been in favor of since the day I walked through these doors, and so I'm happy to see that we're taking care of the people who take care of us. You know, I have, I have throughout the three and a half years that I've been sitting here, at times have been critical of some of the decisions that have been made previous to me sitting here, but I'm also understand that I have the benefit of having hindsight being 2020 and knowing what I know today. So, but this is a good budget. This is, we have, we do have challenges, but I feel like Bossier City and this council and this administration is capable of addressing those challenges. And I wouldn't jump to say that raising taxes is the just first, quickest, easiest way we're going to do that. We can get creative, but it takes working together. And so I look forward to this council over the remainder of our term here, working together to help solve some of these issues as we go into 2025 and beyond. So thank you to Ms. Nottingham, to Ms. Williamson, for y'all's hard work, Mayor Chandler, and to the rest of the council for helping achieve these pay raises that have been desperately needed. Thank you.
Is there any further comment? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance appropriating two-million-eight-hundred-thousand from the 2018 LCDA Bond Fund and approving report of change order number, change order twelve for the construction of Citizens Bank Drive roadway extension in the amount of two-million-five-hundred-thirty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-forty dollars and ninety-one cents for the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Phase Two project. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Free. Is there any public comment?
I think this will be my last comment, but anyway, David Crockett, six-five-three Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Have all the councilmen gone and driven to see what you're doing with two-point-eight-million dollars on this project? I have. It's a very short stint to take Citizens Bank Drive, the way I read it, to go around the corner because of a mistake to me in the design with the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way to bring a drive that goes around to one business because the other business this is going to already has a side driveway that continues where Citizens Bank is right now. So for about a hundred-and-fifty yards, it looks like, at the most, you're spending two-point-eight-million dollars for a driveway to one business. That was a design flaw with the whole way that this project ended. That is my comment. Why would you spend two-point-eight-million dollars on one project that was a result of a mistake? You could spend less than that by building up, looking at the design. So every citizen in Bossier City should go look at this situation that's occurred because of this. Look at the pictures that are associated with this link on the website. It doesn't even portray the situation that's as messy as it is because of the structures that are already on that small piece of land. And I don't even know if the two-point-eight-million dollars includes paying for the land to complete this project. So I believe this is a waste. It does need to be rectified. It did hurt a city or a business that's in that, that one business that I think came up in a previous council meeting, but I believe that everybody in Bossier City needs to write to their city councilman about this project.
Is there any other public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yes. Mr. Jacobs, you weren't a part of this during the negotiation process, but we had certain restrictions placed upon us for the construction of this by Louisiana Department of Transportation. Is that correct?
That is certainly correct at multiple locations and multiple times.
And involved having to purchase businesses.
Correct.
Restitution to businesses.
Correct.
And it was not our mistake nor anyone's mistake for Citizens Bank Drive. It was negotiated so that we didn't have to buy more businesses because of the restrictions by DOTD placed upon us, not a mistake. Am I correct in that statement?
Absolutely.
And the Citizens Bank Drive, again, had to be built so that we did not get involved in litigation due to DOTD restrictions. I'm just, I'm saying that over and over so that, you know.
Citizens Bank Drive and the change order is a direct result of the requirements, restrictions, obligations that were placed on mandated upon the city by the Department of Transportation and Development.
Thank you.
Mr. Wasserman, would you come up for a moment?
Give us just, give us just a second.
Can I just inject one question?
You've had your three minutes.
Would, would you please show me the ordinance that allowed you to negotiate that agreement?
I will make sure you have all the information. Yes, sir. Mr. Roshanbach, if you could. Go ahead, Mr. Darby.
So I believe that your profession as an engineer and you also have spearheaded the project of the Parkway. So would you give just a brief statement regarding this matter, just for clarification?
The Carriage Way, the.
Citizens Bank Drive.
Specifically.
Yeah.
So this particular component of the Carriage Way has been on the books a long time, and as Councilman Montgomery reinforced, it was mandated. There's an ordinance on the books that requires it as part of the project. So that stipulates that we get to work within ninety days of completion of the Carriage Way. The Carriage Way has been partially, issued a partial substantial completion on that. We've prepared a budget for the project using the contractor that's out there currently, and we believe this to be a reasonable cost to get this project completed, and that's what we prepared for you guys. So a lot of work has gone into getting that done. It's very complicated.
Okay, thanks.
This project has to start within ninety days of.
According to the city ordinance, yes, sir.
Could you do me a favor, Ben? Whenever you have time, and I know that's a lot, that's asking a lot, but could you compile all the different projects that all kind of have to deal with Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way before the next council meeting and kind of give us an, an update on where we are figure-wise? Because there are a lot of numbers flying out there, and I would like people to be accurate when they speak on what the project costs, and so.
You want me to put together twenty years of work in two weeks?
No, no. The, the Carriage Way extent, the Phase Two specifically.
Okay.
And, and everything kind of around that.
Yeah, and the price for that's, excluding the property costs, I don't have a lot of visibility on that, but you'll see an immense amount of detail on, on the overall cost of construction within the body of the change order that y'all just previously approved. It's there.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll condense that down. I might have that with me already, and when I get into my report, I'll provide that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there any other comments from the council? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Introducing an ordinance requesting the destruction of the 2016 Motorola in-car camera systems and communications equipment. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Darby and a second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution adopting the city of Bossier City's current investment policy in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 33:2955D and Section 16.02J of the Bossier City Charter, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Free. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution supporting the city's application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under entitlement status, under authority of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, 42 U.S.C., 3535D, and 42 U.S.C. 5301 X-bar.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Darby. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an accountant one due to a termination in the Finance Department, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Darby and a second by Mr. Montgomery. Is there any public comment?
I made a mistake. David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I did have one more comment on the council meeting. I just wanted to read something, having gone through the charter commission and making recommendations that were totally disregarded and were never discussed. One of the things that has irritated the community in Bossier City is the Bossier City Council, well, actually, the Bossier City Charter calls Bossier City a strong mayor form of government.
Does this have anything to do with.
Yeah, yeah, if you'll just, Mr. President, just please control your council. I believe I just read the rules. So my comments are about the fact that this should not be appointed.
Mr. Crockett, give me just two seconds.
Okay.
Ms. McGraw-Pauls is time. You're commenting about the agenda item.
Yes.
Okay.
So my comment is that it's inappropriate for this agenda item to occur. The way Bossier City's charter reads is all powers of the city shall be vested in the city council, except otherwise provided in this law by the charter, and the city council shall provide for the exercise thereof. And it says neither the city council nor any members shall in any manner dictate the appointment or removal of any city employee whom the mayor or any of his subordinates are empowered to appoint, except as provided herein in the charter. And then later, in the city charter, it says the mayor shall be the chief executive officer of the city. All executive and administrative authority shall be exercised through the mayor, except as set forth in this charter. The mayor shall have authority to appoint, suspend, or remove any city employee as provided for by or under the charter or the law, except as otherwise provided by law. One of the issues that the people in Bossier City are frustrated with is that this council basically uses its legislative process to get into the mayor's business. Ms. Nottingham did a superior job about a year ago raising this issue to the council that's never acted upon. I believe that Mayor Chandler should stop this, that councilmen who are willingly violating the charter by adding these things to the agenda should be stopped, or just disregard them. Mayor, I would just do your job. Let them sue you. That's what they're willing to do on the other charter issues, so I just don't think that this needs to continue, and I'll keep raising it until it stops.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Is there any other public comment? Comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of multiple positions in the Parks and Recreation Department, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment? Is there any comment by the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of part-time jailers for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Darby. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve parade permit fee waiver for Stonewall Baptist Church Community Awareness Event on October 19th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Darby and a second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve parade permit fee waiver for Parkway High School Homecoming for October 17th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Darby. Is there any public comment? Comment by the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to contract with Neil Schaefer to provide a traffic study for the intersection of Arthur Ray Teague Parkway and Shady Grove Drive, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Free. Any public comment? Comment by the council?
Yeah, Ben, what is, is the goal to examine a traffic, potential traffic light there?
Possibly. There's been quite a few traffic incidents there over the years, and Councilman Hammond asked if we would look at the safety of that, take a look at the traffic movements and that, and get some suggestions to provide to the council on how we might be able to mitigate that.
Well, the origin of the Parkway was to provide a free flow of traffic, and, you know, there was an incident where someone drove into the river from McDade, and then, you know, a traffic light was put up. I'm just pointing out that that, as it is over on the Clydefam Parkway, you know, was to allow traffic to flow without red light. So I would, during this study, I would like for them to at least look at something as an alternative to a traffic light, because traffic is a huge concern amongst the people of Bossier City and Bossier Parish, and I can't even imagine if there was a red light there and then you had events going on at the arena.
I, I can't say, Mr. Montgomery, someone who drives past that intersection regularly, that's, there's very bad traffic accidents that, where people have died because of high speeds on the, on the Parkway and merging into the traffic, so.
Well, I mean, we could look at lowering speed limits. I'm just.
Yeah.
Let's not just jump off and, you know, have that as our main goal, to hang a traffic light. So that's all. I mean, I, I certainly have the concern for, you know, the loss of life and that number of accidents, but I'm requesting that we look at alternatives to lights as well.
Sure.
To a traffic light.
There, in the past, there's been traffic studies. When they were going to do the Walker Place, they did a traffic study. I don't know if that would still be valid today, but you might want to look back on your records on that.
Yeah, I'll look.
Is there any other comments from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, reports.
Ms. Angela Williamson, Finance Director, Monthly Financial Report.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler, you have before you the financials for the month ended September 30th, 2024. Page one is revenue by fund. The city is currently 15% over budget. The majority of the increase in riverboat capital fund revenue is due to an increase in gaming revenue compared to September 2023. The majority of the decrease in water and sewer fund revenues is due to a decrease in usage compared to September 2023. The majority of the increase in riverboat gaming trust fund revenue is due to an increase in the unrealized gain compared to September 2023. Page two is expenses by fund. The city is currently 9% under budget. The majority of the decrease in water fund expenditures is due to decreases in water treatment plant chemicals compared to September 2023. The majority of the increase in public service and sanitation fund expenditures is due to an increase in street sweeping and grass cutting right-of-way spraying compared to September 2023. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is down 3.8% compared to September 2023. Page four is the manning report. Full-time employees are the same as last month and are 48 under budget. Part-time employees are the same as last month and are 5 under budget. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for September 2024 has decreased 46% compared to prior year. Current year-to-date income has decreased 3% from prior year and is 21% under budget. On a rolling 12-month basis, net operating income is up 13%. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Engineering Department Monthly Project Report.
Good afternoon, council. Quick update. Not a lot's changed here. We did move one project out of design into construction. That was the municipal chiller project, looking like we'll be able to get lateral B1 also out of the design and into construction. We'll come back to you guys once we've evaluated those bids and make sure that we're in good shape there. The Carriage Way, been talking about that quite a bit today. Currently, with the change order that was approved for the additional work there, we're sitting at $40,611,114.93, and that's construction costs. With that added change order, we're 97.1% complete with 91% of the time elapsed. It's 45 days ahead of schedule. Still working through some Mickey Mouse stuff. Hamilton Road will be open next week. They're putting paint on the ground, maybe sooner than that, but they're actually striping that this week to get that open, so we're excited about that. You add in Citizens Bank Drive, Councilman Smith, the total construction cost would be $43,573,577.51, 56 cents. That project started in September of 2021, so it took a little over three years to build the project, you know, in that same span of time, just the price of consumer goods went up over 20%. We're real proud of what J.B. James has done for the city there, all things considered. It was, it was a bit of a battle, a lot of moving parts, but they've done a fine job for the city. Y'all can see the municipal complex outside. This picture was taken this morning. They've already done a little bit more work in there. They're 49 days ahead of schedule. We'll be punching that place, we'll be punching that area out later this week, so I think probably by the time we come back here in two weeks, that project will be complete. Finally got the airline drive overlay signals. The mast arms were put up. We're, we're missing some wiring, as I'm told. They're working through that, but very close to being complete with this particular project. Walbrook Park Building, a little behind. There's a recent picture as of today. They're working on the interior there, but getting close to completing that. Golden Meadows Turn Lane, contractors mobilized back out there. They're working through the concrete flume that has to be put in per DOTD requirements. Expect that to be done, you know, in the next couple of weeks, with this being open for the public by the end of next month. They've set some signal equipment, things like that, out there. Traffic signal upgrade, we're still working through some minor communication issues there, but that's ongoing. These are the various commercial or private development projects that we have specifically related to residential. There's been quite a pickup of that in the engineering office. There's a lot of interest in adding more lots as interest rates drop, so we've been very active with private construction as of late. Not a whole lot to bring out. Coleman Street reimbursement status, I felt like it'd be important to bring that up. Senator Bass has been working heavily to get the city reimbursed for that. It's my understanding, as of October 18th, the check's in the mail. I don't know that I've seen that, but that's what I was told, and we did receive a check today on the FPNC funding that we received through the state to do Hamilton Road. We've received that, so starting to get some of that reimbursement money back, which is nice. Any other specific questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, Mayor Chandler?
Yes, sir.
You want me to skip you, or you want to?
No, sir, sure don't. What I'll do, I want to point out someone and thank someone that has been with us for 20 years, with Louis Williams from upstairs in the camera. Will he, will he stand up for me, please? Louis is from Bossier Parish Community College. He's been with us for the past 20 years, and today is his last day, so we're going to miss him very much. I just want to give you a hand and thank you for all your. Thank you, buddy. Enjoy your retirement or your, what are you going to do in the future?
Please retire.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have to say.
That's all you got?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else from the council? If not, meeting adjourned.